Okay, uh, clock on the wall, I think says six thirty. So let's open the June twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three meeting of what we're planning for. And first order of business is the minutes of June thirteenth. Motion to approve. And I have a change.
Something that couldn't even be made in the way for two months, huh?
Second page.
Second for discussion.
Give me the second.
Second.
And discussion?
Yes, the second page, special permit, estate lot. Uh, since Dick needs to recuse himself due to not familiar relation with family.
Familiar relations, not familiar. What? That's not fancy, Dick.
Thank you very much.
Don't you, don't you even think about it?
I am.
Yes, you gentlemen. Hands and knees, I've done that before, but not often.
Not feeling well. That's, that's okay then.
I'll let you come back in the workplace and I'll hire you at Eversource.
No.
Oh, so any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I recuse, I, whatever I do, recuse. Yes, thanks. Yeah, I'm staying, thanks.
Okay. Uh, obviously no A and Rs, so. Hilltop Estates subdivision.
I guess I'm. Thanks. Uh, and we, if I'm not mistaken, could not open this last time. Is that, or did we read the public hearing last time?
This is brand new.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. All right, so we have a notice of public hearing. I'll read it pursuant to the Town of Rutland subdivision rules and regulations and Mass Journal of Law, chapter forty-one, section eighty W, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three at six thirty P M. To consider the petition of C B Blair Development Corp. for a definitive subdivision plan at Hilltop Estates, partial I D forty-four dash B dash three across from thirty-four to fifty-two Brittonell Drive. Members of the public who wish to attend in person are welcome to do so in the lower level of the Rutland Public Library at two eighty Main Street. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is provided, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated. Should technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Those who wish to watch or listen to the meeting remotely may do so in one of the following manners. We provided a, um, web browser, which, um, I don't think that works. So I think what was mentioned, Tamika, did they already say something to you about that? Okay.
Yep.
Um, sorry that that is incorrect. It should be the meeting tonight. And then it's got participation audio. It's got dialing of phone numbers you can dial in. It's got the meeting I D. Additional information can be found at townofrutland.org forward slash planning board or in the clerk's office. This was published in the Telegram Gazette, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three and June twentieth, twenty twenty-three. That's the notice. Um, I guess typically we start out with a, uh, presentation by the applicant.
I can, um, do that if you'd like.
Sure, I want to start that out for the, everybody here, just do a presentation of the Hilltop Estates, uh, definitive subdivision plan.
So just a quick, this synopsis, actually, we, we've had this in front of the board now for, uh, boy, gotta be going on six or eight months, no? And, um, when the elections came up, one of the members of the board, uh, actually retired. And another member of the board who isn't here again tonight, um, hasn't, wasn't there. So we didn't have enough people to vote. Uh, so we had to take back our, uh, application and resubmit it, which is where we are today. Basically, the plan is, um, a thousand-foot road. It will be servicing ten lots. The, um, the lots were already approved and they, they're what's called an approval not required lots. This, they're all estate lots, I think, most of them. And they'll be serviced by this road, which is really, it, it is a subdivision road, but it's, it's really just a driveway for these. It'll have a, um, an H O A homeowners association. It'll be private, not, will not have any, um, services. I mean, the town won't maintain it. Um, there would be water, it'd be serviced by water and sewer. The drainage has been, uh, reviewed and, uh, done in a stormwater report, uh, like a regular subdivision. We've asked for a number of waivers because we really consider it a driveway. And, um, we've reviewed them. We've had subsequent meeting, after meeting. And I think we're pretty close to where we can make a decision. And, uh, I think that's it. Did I, did I get it off?
Yes, I, I think the, the big thing is we'll go over the, uh, Quinn report 'cause Kevin's done a great job of going through that. I appreciate you guys going back and doing the stormwater for everything, not just part and asking for waiver on that. Uh, I'll start out before we go to the Quinn report. Does the board have any questions, comments?
I do.
Yeah.
So we don't have the fourth member. And he hasn't been here since the beginning of the, I mean, I know Norm's a neighbor, but, and, and he just, at least sit in to give a vote.
He recused himself, he can't. But because this isn't a special permit, my.
I know, but it's, it's gotta have, everybody who's sitting here's gotta vote yes.
Correct.
You know? And, you know.
Um, no, um, it's a majority vote, so two out of three have to do that with Norm not being here.
Is he gone? Kevin?
Well, he's not here to vote, so we don't.
Doesn't matter, he's still a member of the board, so it's five. You need three out of five, at least that's what I understand. I could be wrong.
It is correct. I thought it was a quorum based, if the, it's quorum of.
Need three out of five, three votes.
So that is the correct statement, I stand corrected.
So, I mean, I don't have a problem with Norm sitting in, just you maintain the chairmanship, but let him at least have a vote. Uh, 'cause it gives, at least it gives me a little bit, I mean, either that or, you know, have Kevin show up.
Can't force that. All we can do is request, and I think we've done that multiple times, so I think this board has that. Keith, I know you just do, so I'm not gonna put you in the middle of this, but.
Yeah, I think you should be here too.
Okay, um.
If, if he wants.
Well, I don't have a problem asking Norm and, but I've, I've gotta leave it up to his call.
And he, and it doesn't have to be.
Council call. He's not a director butter, Ken, uh, Tim. He's not a director butter.
It's a board think, I, I'm more apt to think about the board. I don't, I don't really wanna go to town council on this, but if we, if you guys feel that it's necessary, I will.
If I waive it, what does it matter?
Well, it's procedural is what I'm worried about. Somebody, um, could come back and, uh, basically appeal our decision.
Right?
And that's, I really don't wanna get into progressive legal battle over this subdivision.
It's Norm, he is across from one of the estate lots, isn't he? He's across the street, he's not a director butter, but he's across the street.
I don't think he's, is he, what, did he get notified even?
Yeah, 'cause everybody within three hundred feet.
So then he isn't a butter, so. I mean, I, I don't care if you, if you wanna go this way, but, I mean, he can miss one meeting and then.
Well, that's it, after the second meeting, there's no, we can't vote on it anyhow because, um.
You know, it's not fair to have a guy not show up, ever.
I don't disagree with you.
I like Kevin, I don't, I'm not, I don't have any, any bad feelings, but he, but if he's on the board, he should be here to participate. If he's not, then get somebody to.
He has to resign in order to do.
I'll give you, I'll give.
He doesn't come, how many meetings he have to miss?
Cle, I'm just gonna give you our legal standpoint, we've already talked to an attorney about that. There's only two ways, um, a felony conviction or, um, resign. Those are the only two ways the state of Massachusetts elected official can do, unless the town has a recall. Bylaw to recall, those are two ways by law, and the third one is by a bylaw by the town. We don't have a bylaw, there's no felony conviction, and he hasn't resigned, so we're.
I hope he doesn't have a felony conviction, for Christ's sake.
I'm serious.
I might, but he doesn't.
I'm reading National Law Team with, with, um. Amy gave back to us, 'cause we, we've, the board's already asked this decision. Let me grab Norm and I'll ask him, but it's gonna be his call.
Okay.
Just have to get him at the next one. He's agreed.
Wonderful, thank you.
But can I get an email to Tamika indicating that you've agreed to this? And I just, I wanna, I know it's verbal, I know it's recorded, but I'd really like something with documentation.
Do it right now.
Thanks, Tamika, can you, uh, throw that in the file, please? Thank you.
Okay.
I just, I just wanna say, first of all, uh, while, you know, I am in a butter to the property, I do not see any gain or loss in any way for me related to, you know, e- either the approval or rejection of, of the subdivision, so, um, it was, I guess I, I have to say, I'm a little bit reluctant still to step in.
A will of necessity can override a recruit, so if you wanna sit here, you're more than happy to sit.
Any, any interest?
I'll keep you out of the, the chairmanship just as a, uh, as a matter of order, so I'll, I'll still run it and just that you be here to review. That way we can definitely keep any potential proprietary, impropriety out of the game. If you're okay with that. I'll keep you out of the, the chairmanship just as a, uh, as a matter of order, so I'll, I'll still run it and just that you be here to review. That way we can definitely keep any potential proprietary, impropriety out of the game. If you're okay with that.
Well, okay, this is a brand new publisher here.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Okay, I guess I'll go back to the board and see if there's any more questions before we move into the Quinn report. Then once we get through the Quinn report, I'll open it up in public lessons. Anymore, board?
I mean, I've never seen it before, so am I just, I can rifle off anything? Or it's gotta go in order events or?
Um, no, if you.
Questions?
If you've got any questions, just ask questions. This is an open session for the, the board, that's why I wanted to get it open since it's been presented. Um, applicants presented it, I want the board that they've got questions. And then we'll go into, Kevin did a pretty extensive dive into, um, this new plan. I wanted to walk through those, most of them I've read through, I didn't have any issues with, but I think it's, it's to the board and to the public, wanna walk through, uh, this.
Yeah, like not everything, I guess, I would bring up is, is in the Quinn report, but it's just like, I guess, just to ask.
Sure. Start out. Give us a page and, uh.
Um, I guess so, uh, if you've done other subdivisions in town, is, is there a number of phases this would take? Um, is, is that something that comes later?
Would you like me to answer them or you guys?
Just go through the chairman, Cle.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, that's why I'm asking.
The chairman, gee, is it okay?
Yes, of course.
I don't see any in here, so, um, I, I'd like to hear from the applicant if that's.
It's a thousand feet of road, it's, um, and it's only one phase planned. It's not planned on any phases, on, on any more than one.
Okay.
Which, for your knowledge, typically we don't allow over a thousand feet.
Or dead end road.
Yeah, on a dead end road, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's almost a waiver or something.
No, it's not, it's typically a no-no. We don't allow it typically, in fact, I can't think of one. Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna go, not since we put the requirement. Yeah.
Okay.
What else you got, sir?
Um. I don't know how much it matters, but if, you know, if it's one phase, um, like how, how long would this project take? Yes.
Well, it depends, uh, so again, through the chair, what I would, what I would say to you is, you know, once this gets approved or denied, whatever, but if, let's say this gets approved, we, um, we have to put in water and sewer and then, you know, grub out and, I mean, it's probably, and then we have to sell ten houses, I mean, you're probably looking at a couple of years.
Twenty-four months.
Yeah.
Okay.
They've done a lot of clearing, if I'm not mistaken, already of, uh, of trees up there, 'cause I've driven by it a couple of times, so that's out of the way, so.
Got some stuff started, okay, um.
Good questions, keep asking.
Yeah, um, just the, the way the driveway works, I mean, it's a big hill you guys are cutting into. You know, retaining walls or just hills, uh, you know, how are you gonna keep it held back, I guess.
So again, through the chair, up to, it's, I believe, what do we have, two to, two to one slope?
I believe so.
So when we make the big cut coming off Brittonell Drive, a two to one slope is considered stable. Kevin can back me up on that. If it was one to one, it would probably not be considered stable, so they didn't want some sort of retaining wall. One of the waivers is asking to raise, the Town of Rutland says nothing over eight percent.
Yeah, per roadway.
I've asked for ten?
Ten.
Ten, because what that does is, you know, for, as a percent of grade, if, if you're not aware, for every hundred feet, it goes up a foot, that's one percent.
Yeah.
So ten percent in a hundred feet, it goes up ten feet.
Yeah.
But in, if, if you gotta go up only eight percent, you go up eight feet, so there's another two feet. And after three hundred feet, you're, you know, you're, it's another six feet, so it allows us to get the two to one slope if we get that extra waiver.
Okay.
Before we go any farther.
Sure.
You said ten percent, right?
Yes.
I got eleven and a half here.
That's an old one.
That's an old.
Oh, that's the old one?
Yeah.
Confusing me by putting the old stuff in here.
You guys gave me the poo poo on the eleven, so I had to go back to ten.
That's why I was stopping you, 'cause I saw the eleven in here. You can't put old stuff in here, you confused us. All right, let me see that detail, I just, I wanna make sure all the details are here. All right, I'm gonna back up and see if I see.
That plans I gave you?
Yes, no, no, this was in the, uh, this was in the packet.
Oh, okay.
Which is got the new, it's got the zero rev on it, it's got the waivers.
If I may, the latest version is in your packet? I didn't have a larger plan set of that, so I, I didn't provide that. That is probably the older one.
So the date is one seventeen twenty-two?
Is that you guys' latest ones?
Yeah, the revised is in the packet.
We don't have the latest, that's, well, that's the reason why I was, I was struggling, 'cause I didn't see the, I didn't see the ten percent in here, so.
Okay.
Can you?
It's like slow to respond, sorry.
That's okay, no, if you go back, it's, would be like probably sheet five or six.
Yeah, the profile sheet will show it.
I just wanna make sure, Keith, you got a good point, I wanna make sure that that's in here, 'cause.
I'm gonna look, we got a full-size set on paper from Google.
Sure, if you, yeah, Kevin, I appreciate that, 'cause this one. I just wanna see it, it's making me.
You wanna see the profile?
Yeah, we engineers are bad habits about, uh, Missouri, prove it to me.
Rev dates, rev dates, I always wanna see the rev dates.
The other thing, I'm not stickler on rev dates. I see there's two revs there in this one, I don't have any rev dates, so. All right. Where is the ten percent called out? Right on the, uh, it should be down. Right, where are we? I'm guessing it's somewhere in here, 'cause this is where the, this flattens out up there, so it's gotta be somewhere in here.
It is ten.
Yeah, that's utilities, yep. Yeah, that's the, that's the ten percent.
All right, good. Yep, yeah, 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 that's all I wanted to see. Excellent, all right, sorry, Keith.
No, you're okay, yeah.
Make sure my I's are dotted and T's are crossed.
Um, yeah, some stuff could be, um, in the waivers and stuff that Quinn was talking about that we'll go over later, but, um, like retention pond versus country drainage, it's like multiple ways to divert water, so not all of them are catching.
Country drainage is when you don't have catch basins or curbs, and you let the water flow off, sheet flow off the roadway.
Okay.
And then typical curb and gutter drainage is when you have your curbs and, and, uh, a catch basin that collects the water through pipes to a detention.
Okay.
And this design has. Yes.
So the, coming off Brittonell is country drainage, and then everything kinda up by people's houses is gonna go into.
No, just the opposite.
Okay.
The flatter it is, you can do the country drainage.
Okay.
The steeper it is, guys like Kevin make you put in retention ponds and all that other stuff, so. He was very stickler on that one too. It's the steeper it is, the harder it is to control the water, so that's where they want the catch basins and the detention ponds.
Okay. And then, um, I guess the road, Brittonell itself, I don't know if that's gonna come up in the waiver questions, just how is the road gonna handle all the equipment over there and stuff?
I'm going to bring that up as something we haven't talked about previously.
What if, I don't know when to, yeah.
No, no, the, the thought process was in the original, um, orders of condition for the, I'm having a brain damage, state lots. We had agreed with the applicant that there was gonna be some, I don't wanna use upgrading, fixing or adding to the existing Brittonell with some stone, give more drainage, and obviously make it accessible to heavy equipment, and we were only gonna allow heavy equipment to come in, if I'm not mistaken, from Glenwood, not from Palmagussit.
I thought it was the opposite of that.
Could be.
Yeah, Joe, Joe had a.
Joe, yes, our DPW director at the time had come up with that requirement, and I wanted to take, uh, again, we haven't talked about it, this is, I was gonna ask the applicant for the, if, if some of the waivers that we're gonna grant, the offset to them would be, I'd like to take those orders of condition from that, um, this special permit and add them into this, um.
As a condition of approval?
As a condition of approval for.
I gotta do them anyway.
Keeping the road.
Yeah, keeping the road updated, and it wasn't doing all of Brittonell, but it was doing within the area of doing upgrades and also.
Certain number of cubic yards.
Yes, yeah. Again, I, I hadn't mentioned it to you, it just popped in my mind this week, and I said we'd bring it up, I'd bring it up during, but that, that's what I was thinking of. Yep.
Okay, cool, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's pretty skinny right by the, where that would go, so, you know, two lane traffic and stuff like that.
Being a historic road, what they, they, they frown on, widening it, and it's a scenic or whatever.
I think we need three lights there.
Oh, yeah. But nobody in the town, nobody else in the town will go along with it, I would agree with that a hundred percent.
Depends how much money you wanna put in gravel every year.
Well, uh, all I can say is, you know, Joe came up with his own mix, you know, like the ground asphalt and so forth, and put down a good layer. I am absolutely amazed at how well it has stood up.
And look at the, you know, some washout in places, but not bad at all.
Not much.
Yet sometimes, there used to be ruts in that road, this deep, this, this year, it's beautiful.
The road has been better than it's ever been.
Yeah.
Yeah. Really has, he's done a good job. So can we get a hasp, a pat, a hat passing to get him back?
Yeah, well, I'll tell you what.
I'm kidding, Keith, keep going, I'm sorry for interrupting.
Uh, no, that's okay, um, and then I guess the gentleman that lives across the street or whoever lives in the house across the street, if, um, they got a stone wall there and like a fence and stuff, if, if, um, is, or is it possible people can slide if they don't, if they're H O A? You know, they end up in that guy's front yard or anything like that, you know, I don't know.
That's that guy right there.
Okay, I hope not, so, I mean, I don't know, thoughts on that or whatever?
Well, to, to help answer your question, which again, we haven't, we haven't, uh, it's more of the details, but I talked with the board earlier, and this was in Maryland's here, that the H O A that we're thinking of, um, and we, we talked with Kevin about it, we had a sub-meeting about it, it's not gonna be our typical H O A, which doesn't have a lot of teeth in it. This H O A is gonna indicate and be part of the deeds that all these homeowners up here will contribute to maintenance of the road, um, snow plowing, all of that, and there'll be some teeth of what happens if they don't, not just, you know, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna send you a letter, no, there could be liens against their property, mechanics lien, stuff like that, so that's where we're gonna need legal help from, um, K P to help us be a little bit more more descriptive of our H O A, probably is a good way to say that, so. This is gonna be probably one of the first more in-depth H O As Rutland's done, in my opinion.
That's cool.
I don't know, Kevin, I, I think that's a true statement, Norman, Dick, I'll, I'll leave you.
It will be.
Yeah, it will, it will have to be, but.
Okay.
The other thought that I still had, 'cause, you know, it is a steep hill coming down, and I do have visions of a B F I truck coming down in this icy, um, and I don't know, I was still wondering if there couldn't be some kind of decorative, I'll call them decorative bollards put across from that opening.
Yeah, but what would they serve, dude?
The guy would just drive into them, you mean?
It would be a stopping, like. No, I know, but maybe a couple of signs with, with, you know, with. I know from. I know bollards aren't gonna get here anywhere. Oh, yeah, they are, I put them in. I, I put them in all of my cabinets at Eversource, and they stop cars and taking my cabinets off of, uh, off of their pedestals. I've installed tons of E V where Eversource and. Yeah. We put the bollards in, the bollards, they do stop things, but for the most part. I don't know about, I don't know about a B F I truck. We're talking, not for the type of traffic we're talking, he doesn't have to put bollards in.
Big log.
Yeah.
Well, before we do any of that, I wanna talk with, with Kevin and see if it. 'Cause having bollards across from it doesn't, I, I don't know, doesn't.
If I could add.
It's a scenic road too. Yeah, that's the other problem, of putting it in there, that's gonna be a tough one.
Needs to be something decorative.
Oh, pretty is a lock.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Cle.
So if, I don't know if you guys have ever been down, but Jim Callick designed a road just before the whole, just on the Holden Worcester line, Joe Zartley built the road. It is exactly this, it's, it's ten percent, it comes down and it has a leveling area at the bottom, which this has. You guys insisted on it, if a truck comes down, it does have fifty feet to level out. Um, yeah, if it's icy, I mean, you're never gonna do anything with ice, but if, if, uh, you know, it, it's not.
Is that that subdivision, if you're going into, uh, Worcester, it's on the right side with that road?
This one's on the left side going into Worcester, the other one that Ed Jottis did is just a little ways down on the right, and that one comes ten percent, and it doesn't have the leveling area, it goes right into the street.
Yeah, I know that one.
So that, you know, the leveling area, I, I believe is important, and that, and this has it.
Okay. I'm sorry, I, I live right there. I mean, uh.
Before.
He, he, he has an, he has an issue we're gonna run into.
Time out.
I've actually.
I, I'll get to, I, I wanna get to the board and get through Kevin's report, then I'll get to the public.
I'm not disagreeing with, with Cle at all, just so you know. I'm gonna actually com- uh, comment on him and just actually help him out with the statement.
Let me, let me just get through this and then I'll, we'll get to them. I wanna do this systematically.
I think, yeah, those are most of the questions I need, so that's uncool.
Dick, any questions, comments?
Too many waivers.
Okay.
It's been my comment from day one.
Norm, anything?
I've said this a probably a hundred times. Uh, I don't think it's a good plan, but it's better, much better than the alternative.
Yes.
The alternative would really stink.
Only single or single?
Yep. Okay, there's no other, I'd like to walk through the Quinn report, and then we'll get to public comment right after we get through the Quinn report. So the, the first part of the report, um, Kevin details the waivers A through, um, K. One of, uh, if I'm not mistaken, there was one in here that's been pulled, which was the requirement to waive the stormwater management, that's been pulled from the waivers, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
Okay. Um. Let's walk through the waivers. Kevin, I know we've been through these a couple times, but I'll walk through them again. The first one is for a requirement for a twenty foot radius at the street line intersection permitting rounding of easements in Lou. I guess I'm looking, that's been done before, and.
We've, we've done that commonly. And physically, the road is not different. It's just the legal means to have the roundings on both sides.
Yeah.
So I guess what I'm getting at, this isn't a, um, a precedent that we're gonna set in Rutland, this has been done before, and it's not something.
In Rutland, but they've, it's pretty common, we do them.
Okay. Alright. Um, any comments to that on the board? Okay. Uh, the next waiver is, and this is a three percent leveling zone, or this is a fifty percent to prevent a leveling zone of four percent for fifty percent, the intersection of Brittenell. Um, they've got a leveling zone there, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
And.
That's what, six inches difference.
Yeah, there's a six inch difference. Um, I personally don't have a problem with that. From an engineering standpoint, Kevin, any?
I think, I, I think it all comes down to a matter of degrees. You know, if you, if you throw it out the window, well, then you've got a problem, but adjusting it a little bit one way or the other is not really gonna affect safety directly.
Okay. Keith, anything?
You know, I didn't realize the, um, the, the degree of the slope or was, um, had anything to do with this leveling thing, so I mean, that's, if there's.
Comes down and we've got a flat place at the bottom.
Yeah. I didn't, I didn't notice that there is a leveling, so that's, that's good to hear, you know?
Dick? I know you're not happy with all the waivers.
That is correct, especially coming on that road. I try to think of, you know, the angle and everything else. So the trees and sunlight can't get in there to help melt.
That was the one thing that Norman brought up to me in, in a, a, a personal discussion. That Brittenell there, it, that section is facing the, the western sun, so it gets a lot of sunlight for melting, as opposed to, you know, the rest of Rutland, that drunk cows have gone around and made roads, so that's an advantage I didn't, hadn't, hadn't noticed or hadn't realized in the past.
About the sunniest part.
So that was a positive for me for this, uh, this second waiver. For the, uh, cuz I was worried, even at that leveling place, we could have some potential sheeting of ice across there. And I'm, I'm not saying it's perfect, I'm just saying it's, it's a positive. Uh, the next one that we've already, we talked about, but I'll go over again, is waiver of street gate from eight percent to ten percent. I wasn't happy with eleven and a half or twelve, um, when we sat down with Marilyn, Cle, uh, engineer that's not here. Yeah, and, uh, um, Kevin, ten percent did not seem to be a, uh, what's the word I'm looking for, a showstopper.
If, if, when we look at things like this, one of the things we do is, I don't wanna, I don't want my judgment on the table. So we look at federal standards, and there's a lot of federal standards that ten percent roads are pretty commonly approved. The feds talk about that in hilly areas, and this is certainly a hilly area, because if you held out for an eight percent slope, now the excavation, the cut slopes that Cle mentioned earlier are gonna be much bigger. So the, the trade off is the road's a little steeper, and the less, it's a less, um, excavation necessary to accommodate that.
And you'd said something too with that less excavation, that reduced the amount of, of offflow from the properties onto the road. So I'm not saying it reduced the amount of water, but it slowed it down because you weren't having that drop off, trying to get into eight percent. That, that gave me a little bit of a warm fuzzy, since these properties, uh, there's gonna be a ten percent slope as opposed to, I know two percent, but.
We have waived to ten percent before.
Yes, I know that Hellbrun Carlson way we did, I know that for a fact, cuz I was here for that on the board. Um, waiver of sidewalks, we've done that before. Um, I, if the boards get any opinions, I, I don't on that one, cuz we've waived it before. Um, waiver of eighteen inch bank run gravel plus six inch gravel to permit a total gravel depth of twelve. We'll need some help on this. I don't remember this one when we were talking during the waiver, so help me out with this one.
Well, um, Rutland, in this, in central Mass, is probably the only town that requires eighteen inches of gravel. That waiver will bring it back to what most communities have, twelve inch bank, bank run is pretty standard for gravel. I don't, I mean, if, I don't, I don't, I can't, I'll put it this way, in terms of the community, the town at large, whatever the impact that might be, it'll fall on the homeowners, not the town around. I don't, I don't see any objection to it, I don't, I don't, but it sets a precedent.
Well, that was gonna be my que, I mean.
It's a private road, though.
I know it's a private road, but it still sets a precedent, and do you feel that the time, will eighteen inches be better than twelve over the time for, you know, these people are gonna gotta truck up the money, you know, to fix this thing?
Can I, can I, yeah, interject if you'd like?
Let me just get Keith, any comment?
Um, obviously, it sounds like eighteen's more stable to a degree, um. You know, I guess it's just what could happen with, you know, water. If it can hold, you know.
Yes, everyone wants to do on that, but.
Okay. Norm? I know it's in our subdivision standard, that's reasonable. We haven't updated in about.
Any other towns around the requirements, uh, my, my own personal thoughts is I'd rather see thicker pavement than necessarily all that much gravel.
Okay, Cle, go ahead.
So the purpose of the gravel, Kevin can correct me if I'm wrong, is that it, it allows the water to flow freely under the road, so that you don't have a- and, and sometimes you need sub drains because you need to stop, cuz it'd be too much water would undermine it. But if you have twelve inches or eighteen inches, I mean, is, the water's still gonna flow under the road, it's not gonna undermine itself, and like as we had said before, it's every other town, it's twelve inches. It's not, it's not, it's something that's done. So that's why, and, and I agree with Norm, I mean, a little bit thicker pavement is gonna give a, you know, a, a twelve inch gravel base or an eighteen inch basis, I mean, I don't know what you.
Dick, one of the reasons Marilyn and I acqui, uh, just acquiesce, we agreed, is, one, it was a private. Um, if this was a subdivision based on rules and regs, might not be as easy to give this waiver, because it was private. And because Kevin had told us that, uh, a lot of our towns around us had gone to twelve, we were a little bit sort of neutral to maybe okay with this. And that was the meeting that we had on the side, so I just wanted to put that out there.
One other thought on that is, this, this road now, the plan's called for sub drains, because it's such a deep cut, we wanted sub drains. Sub drains are gonna remove the water, and the gravel ties into that. So the benefits of eighteen inches of gravel is less apparent than twelve, because you're tying in sub drains that are really get the water out of there, and the gravel, it, it has to be tied into those sub drains to be able to remove that water.
And that's the warm fuzzy that we have for the total system, as opposed to just letting the gravel do it for eighteen inches. Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Um, if it goes to twelve, is that just six and six for bank run and then select? Is that how it looks like?
Pretty much either do it.
Okay.
I feel like the grade is smaller gravel, it's nicer to work with.
That's on top, if I remember right, so you get the drainage underneath and the, and the, and the smaller gravel for the sub, before you put in. Alright, the next one, waiver for security bards, that's pretty much been a given for us. I mean, we've, Dick, I think we've done that on about everyone we've gone through.
Correct.
So I didn't have a problem with that. Head walls at culverts. Um, I remember that we had this, we've been doing that on a pretty regular basis, anyone?
Flat end zone.
Yeah.
And, and the rip route.
Yeah. Kevin, I'm gonna rely, cuz I, it, it's been a month and a half since we talked about this, so I'm.
Well, we, we like flat end sections. A, a, a flat end is the, the, instead of the pipe just popping out of the ground, it's a, it's a cast concrete, um, structure that spreads the water out a little bit. Um, we like them because the grating around them is more gentle. A head wall is a, you know, kid running along, falls off a head wall, breaks his arm.
Okay.
Um, the only comment that we have that these fellows are not excited about is the outlets, the, the flat end section should be concrete. They've, they've proposed HDP pipe, which is great, but the, the HDP, the plastic flat end sections, they don't stand up. They're, they're just plastic, and concrete lasts, you know, many, many years.
Alright.
Yeah, that's fine. It would be up to the homeowner to replace it if it was plastic.
Yeah, I would rather have the concrete, and when we get to that, that we can, that can be part of one of the, uh, um, updates.
Yeah.
So I'm putting concrete. Alright, um, uh, waivers to permit country drainage in some areas, and I think we've talked about that already. Where in the flatter areas, um, we'd have the country drainage, in the steeper areas, that's where we're gonna catch the water and get them into catch basins. Um, comments, questions, anybody? Okay. Next one is my personal.
How much of a, how much of a slope, you know, before you, country drain, is it just fairly shallow for a pitch?
Yes, it's almost flat.
Five, no more than five percent.
Yeah.
Okay, bye.
Is it gonna take up a lot of someone's front yard, or? Is it coming, yeah, it comes rough the.
No.
Off the road.
Is it the swales, like I'm used in the Midwest where I swale them out? All of my curbs I grew up with, we've got swales right by our driveways. So we were doing country drains, we just didn't know it.
No.
And then we put our, our, our house numbers right there on the swale that was concrete. So, okay, I'm used to that, that's what I grew up with. Um, the next one, I would like some cast iron, beautiful street lights in this area, that would be beautiful, everyone would be proud of. And Dick is kicking me under the table.
Gas lanterns.
Painting gas ones.
Natural gas.
So after rain gas from. Customers will pay for, are they, yeah. No, I, I, I don't have a problem with the waiver of the street lights. Street trees, um, I wanted to put this out to the board and see what they think. I, I mean, we've had, the, the, the struggle I was having with this is, our street trees always cause problems with sidewalks, since there's no sidewalks. Um, trees always help with drainage, that was something that I was gonna throw out there, so I didn't know what the board's thought was on this.
I think it's not a big deal for me.
Okay.
I just, it's just one of those things that I, not, most customers don't want them. They get mad at me for planting them.
Putting these tree trees.
But they had to cut down, what was the most favorable tree that was there, oak or soft maple or?
I think. I think it's a oak, yeah. Have, have we ever done this in our orders of conditions, street trees not required, but street trees available at the option of the homeowner, so.
It's an option for them anyways.
Yeah, but we're saying, I, I don't.
You can plant it, they could cut it two days later.
I'm trying to.
Yeah, I'm trying to get a waiver off the table, but still not require you to put them in if they're not, if the, if your customer doesn't want them, that's what I'm trying to do, and I just don't know how to word it.
I think the trees around there will help replant.
I mean, it's, it's only twenty trees, it's not a big deal.
Okay.
I just, you know, I, people, I, the reason I wanna waive them is cuz people just don't want them.
Yeah.
That's alright. Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
That's gonna be pretty dark over there. I mean, I, if, if the customers, seeing it's a, it's a homeowner association, so they'd have to pay the street lights, I mean, one or two might, I, I don't wanna, I hate the thought of putting them in, but it's gonna be dark as hell.
They accompany most of my summers, and.
Okay, we'll leave them.
You can take those looms and folks them down on the street where it doesn't cause problems up. And as long as they don't look like the ones over in Holden by the golf course that could land planes from Anscombe.
They'll have their own lights, I guess, I just, you know, sometimes I, you know, I know you guys don't like them, so I asked for a wave of them.
What, what I would like to see, what's not on here, and I don't know how to do that, is at that, um, intersection, some type of light there. I mean, I, I know there's not a lot on Brittenell, but.
Whoa, 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 there's no lights on Brittenell. There's no lights in that whole entire area. Why should he have to put up a light?
I would say probably not, because it's so close to his house and his house.
Wildlife, it's a deterrent to wildlife.
Yeah.
Well, I'm asking the board, thought process?
Alright, I'm good with that.
I'm more worried about cars and traffic turning in at night.
There's no cars and traffic, it's a dirt road.
Do you know how many houses are gonna be on Brittenell?
There's gonna be about nine more, at least.
And then you got Brittenell Estates?
No, they don't come around, that, that's what you're talking about right now, right?
No, 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 we're talking, Brittenell Estates is down the way. There's thirty-eight houses there?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four, thanks. And then with that road opening up, you're gonna have, uh, Grizzly all of a sudden finding ways to get out on Brittenell.
Grizzly.
So, and again, I'm fine with that, it, it was just a suggestion, I'm not saying that.
The problem is, is if the roads, if the road is paved, I get it, but it's, it's still a wilderness area, you know? I mean, is that, is there plans to get the road paved? Is that part of the plan?
No, you can't.
Never allow. Yeah, actually, that's not true, you can pave it, the scenic roads can be paved.
Oh, yeah, they can be paved.
Yeah, it's just, there's a policy been in Rutland for decades that you can't pave a scenic road, that's incorrect.
And I apologize for interrupting. Uh, one thing I was gonna interject with is, in front of my house, they, they put like a burn, and I keep pulling cars out of there. If you can find a way to extend the piping down there, you know what I'm talking about, right?
I'm actually not.
It's not the town, you, you didn't have anything to do with it, but the town, I'm constantly pulling cars out of there. When you talk about going down that grade and it flattens out, is actually, what they did is they dug it all out, they put something sort of, cuz it was washing my driveway away, so I couldn't get out of my house. And they basically put like a, like a fourteen inch pipe or something like that, it's a, you know, a cement pipe, you know, you know. If you can find a way to extend that, so I'm not pulling people out every ten minutes, that'd be very helpful for a lot of people.
Is that, is that gonna cross that road, or?
It's on Brittenell.
It's down.
Yeah, that's, that's.
It's right down about a hundred yards from where the entrance is. It's a problem, it's always been a problem, I know Norm knows about it, I don't have to get into details, nor would it explain.
DPW, yeah.
It would be DPW.
It's, uh, DPW, Dick, it's not yours, I don't wanna bring that up, but I wanna explain to you, you do have a huge problem with that. Cars will go down there all, I mean, they go, that, this year, at least four cars went down there. I pulled out three of them, another one I just sat there and watched, cuz the person was a dickhead. I pulled out three of them, another one I just sat there and watched because the person was a dickhead. You know, I have to burn it up in front.
Yeah.
What the DPW did is they basically pulled out the whole area, they put a fourteen inch pipe, I think it's a fourteen inch, the, the cement pipe. And they, they put a trench, they trenched it. So people keep dumping into the trench, they almost pulled out my wall, they came within three inches of the wall.
Was that norm for drainage?
That's something you have to con- it is something you have to consider, I don't think it's, it's not your issue, it's actually a DPW issue, but they created that problem.
Is, is this, is this like in between, I, I'm trying to picture where.
It's down, it's down.
You have a narrow house down there?
Where the easement is. The brown one with the, with the garage right up at the front.
Just, you know, just, just below the temporary egress.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, 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 okay, now I know what you're talking about, you know.
That is something you do have to consider because people keep going in there, if things, when things get frozen, they just, just dump in there. I mean, I can't tell you how many people I pulled out up by old man, uh, Walker's house, I mean, they, the amount that used place to be just a mud pit. I think it's, take the strap and pull them out, but now I'm pulling them out in front of my house.
I would suggest.
That's a DPW thing, though.
Well, a, a, and, and I, I would suggest, I don't know who the, who's the replacement, I apologize, I don't know who the replacement chief or director is over there.
It's Chris, isn't it?
Chris?
Oh, God, you had a guy left?
What's that?
You had a guy left?
Yeah, Joe's gone, he's been.
Joe was awesome.
Yeah, he's gone.
Was this, I said, Mecuzo or something like that?
Uh, Buckley.
Buckley, he's, he's in, he's in Amesbury now, he's, he's gone from us, we don't have.
I knew he wasn't gonna stay here long. That's why the roads are so nice.
But my, my suggestion is put a, uh, in writing to the DPW and just say, it's, get it on record.
I don't care, it's someone else, I, I choose not to pull them out, but what, what, your planning of this, this does need to be necessary because it is a huge hazard. What if someone gets stuck there overnight and I refuse to pull them out?
Well, it's Brittenell, and see, it's, it's not, and the, the board can tell if wrong, it's not part of this subdivision, that's, or this, uh.
Uh, but when you build a goddamn stadium, you have to figure all the roads in and out of there.
We've got a, yeah, typically, we just look at the area of where the subdivision's going in, we don't look at all the roads around it. That's just, that's, that's the.
I know that's typical, but that's not acceptable, is that what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying, I just, I don't think we have any, and board can tell if wrong, we don't have any legal.
When you're planning, you do need to include the fact that people need safe traverse in and out of to their property. That's simple enough, that doesn't have anything to do with cleat, that has to do more with the town.
Yes, yeah, and we don't, I, it's not part of this hearing is what I'm getting at.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's all I wanted to say, I get it, I, I, I understand, I just, I can't bring it in as part of this hearing, cause the hearing's on, um.
Believe it or not, I wouldn't have been sitting here if I could just dial the, watch it on my tape.
Hey, no, no.
I'm the worst person to have sitting here, you know?
I was just thinking that, I, no, I'm.
So I, I look at for the boards.
Trees, still leave it as a waiver, or do we come up with some wording to? I'm looking for feedback. I personally would like to have something in there saying that, you know, it's an option. Cause we, i- if you look up there, that, that whole area's been cut down to nothing left there.
Just because it would be hard, I would, I, I would say, you know, it might be very reasonable to waive the street trees along the ten percent grade. Okay, but when you get down to the flatter surface, you know.
At the top where it's leveled out?
It's like a split decision, I like it. You know, the two to one thing, you plant a tree, you get a good rainstorm, all of a sudden, oh, the trees like this.
I'm good with that, rest of the board? That means we'd have trees at least in there, but it just wouldn't be on the steep slopes. Would help with the country drain.
Dick, you gotta give me something.
Be nice to come back in thirty years and see all the stuff that's grown up and hasn't been cut down.
Trees. There, there will be trees that will seed themselves.
Yeah, birds have a way of, of just.
Take care of the sides of their houses and the backyards, it all fills in. Early in the 1980s.
One, cut them down.
They're all trees now.
The next one was waivers of cul-de-sac plantings, we pretty much as a board, if we ever get a chance, or we can ever hire the young lad in the blue shirt to help us with our subdivision regs, there's gonna be some.
Mighty changes.
Mighty changes, and this is one of them, because we've, they, they cul-de-sac planting is nothing but a maintenance nightmare. And it's also not a, not a, in my opinion, a safe avenue for snowplow drivers either.
No, it's a pain.
Is that if there's a center?
It, it basically put a center island, and then you can put plantings and trees and nine times out of ten, if the snow gets up there with the salt or anything like that, they're dead.
Yeah.
So.
Nobody plants it in them anyway.
So, we. A few years back, um, had decided it's just better to have a turnaround, actually, it's better too for safety from ambulances and trucks, cause they've, they've got a big turnaround area.
They have to bring in the life flight.
Yeah, it's a nice helipad, so. All right.
It's a place to skateboard.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But that's the waivers, um, any comments from the board? Then we'll move on to the subdivision, uh, points that Kevin's brought up. Um, the next, the first one is country drainage is proposed. Um, I, I, I think we beat this to death, I, I like it on the flats. Um, any comments from the board? Cause the comment is, the office defers to the board if the proposed country drains may be approved, however, does not object to use here. So, are engineers okay with it? Um, I'm fine in the flats of using it. Um, it's in the design.
As long as it's only over five percent or less snow.
Yep. Um, the next one is proposed roadway pavement is eighteen feet wide. This is consistent with residential access roadway, which is tend to serve no more than twenty houses, which this does not. So again, I'm, I'm okay with it, board?
Yeah.
Keep looking over here until he acknowledges me.
Oh, I'm supposed to?
Yeah, yeah, you can tell me to go to hell, I'm good with that.
Twenty, twenty is standard, right? Or?
Twenty years.
Twenty is.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, yeah.
We, we did eighteen, wasn't it? We were off of Irish Lane.
Yeah.
And it was a kind of a bad thing.
Yeah. Well, well, for the town, for the town for plowing snow in the winter, the town isn't gonna plow this one.
No, but are we thinking about the people there? There's no sidewalks, so.
Brittenell's, how wide is Brittenell? Fifteen feet, fourteen feet?
Yeah.
Twelve feet in some places. I know what we talked about, this was an upgrade to Brittenell, that's the reason why we were okay. Sixteen wouldn't have flowed, eighteen was okay with. So, I, I was fine with that, I just wanna put it out to the board and see if there's any other.
I don't have a problem.
Like you say, this is private.
Uh, locus map, which must be updated depicts surrounding properties, including other lands to the applicant. You guys okay with getting that done? Have you seen this, let me ask, let me ask the applicant, have you guys seen, it came out on the twenty-second of June, so it's been out for five or six days, five days? Okay. With the weekend in between. I'm trying not to.
But on the front cover, there's a, it shows the whole property.
Is this an update to? Let me ask, is this an update to these comments?
There are quite a few, no, that has not been one hundred percent updated.
Okay, so, cause that's, I mean, that's what I would, I'm going through it now just to read it, but our intent was your response to the board.
Letter back with no further comments.
Yes, that's the magic. That's the goal for the next meeting. I just wanna go, I wanna go through these and make sure we understand. Um, the next one is the planted land was omitted from the plan set, um, four, I'm not, you guys, meets and bounds, that'll get added in or comments?
Actually, I think the sheet was just not in my set, cause you had one in the, in the previous set.
It should be here. Well, the meets and bounds is. It's area meets and bounds, usually there's like a front page that has. Sorry, plans, A and a, A and a half plan, so the A and a half plan is what's.
Previous set.
We'll make sure we have that.
Yeah, the previous set, there was a sheet that broke out the lots, I think there's that one sheet got missed.
No, that's fine, sheet two is not in there, so we, I'll make sure you have that.
Okay, great.
That's it?
That's easy.
Um, five is I wanted to ask the board since we're.
Here, it says, may require a traffic study.
I.
I, I'm looking for comments, cause I'm, I'm drawn on this one, cause right now, there's, a traffic study usually indicates hundreds of vehicles. I don't, I don't think this.
I don't think we asked for a traffic study for Brittenell.
No.
So therefore.
That's why I say, uh, my comment is no on this one, but I wanted to get the rest of the board.
Well, once again, you know, if this gets turned down, there's still gonna be that extra traffic.
Yeah, this is true. Same cause. And I think number six, I've already sort of alluded to, which is, the board may require improvements to Brittenell Drive in order to provide adequate access to subdivision. I think I, I, I'd mentioned to the board that I liked what we had come up with for the.
Original.
Original, um, estate lots, and I'd like to include that as part of our orders of condition.
Wasn't that about six thousand, wasn't it six thousand feet of gravel?
I don't remember, I'd have to look back. But, uh, Joe had come up with that, and, uh, I respect and trust his decisions, what he was looking for, so. And then again, on top of that, um, we'll have to look back at that one, but there was also access, so we weren't bringing in construction trucks from both ends, pick one end and that's where the truck's coming from for construction here.
They have to run in and out, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
You know, on that gravel, where, where the surface now is this, whatever you wanna call it, asphalt mix.
It's ABC, it's a mix, it's ground up asphalt, brick and concrete.
We wanna specify that rather than just plain gravel.
I'm okay with that if.
You don't wanna use anything but that, on, on Glenwood Place, we, that's exactly what we used, the ABC.
Is that a secret mix, we've gotta pay Joe to get, or?
No, it's, uh, it's readily available.
All right, I wouldn't mind in that section having that put back down then, but again, this is when we get to the o- the, uh, orders, but I'm gonna put a note here. And Kevin, if you could throw that in there, or, or Julian, that'll be part of the discussion.
Um.
Asphalt mix.
Yeah, with six, I was reading like a lot of the fine print, and I guess I just didn't understand one thing on page six of the plan, it says, says the town's gotta, after the utilities go in, the town's gotta bring the road back up to spec on their own, I just didn't know.
Is in, in this plan?
That, well, it might be leftover, I don't know, if someone else wants to look at it real quick. Um, I mean, I mean, if it's in the big. Yeah, would have been on that, it's online, which could just be something you deleted. Um, which could be part of six, it's on my.
Page six?
Yeah, just, just that one right there.
Yeah, they put that in.
Just what you, what everyone else.
Basically, what, what that says is that they have to come back and do, improve the road surface to the satisfaction DPW.
Okay. So.
Exactly what we just talked about.
Superintendent comes out and says, not a good job, follows, they gotta go back and fix it.
Which goes into six, which would.
Okay.
Expand, cause the intent was keep the, not just where it comes into Brittenell, but up and down from it, basically come up with a, uh, a cleaned up road. Now, not all the way from Palm Augusta until Glenwood, unless that is desirable by the applicant. I gotta ask, cause if I don't ask, I don't get it.
I couldn't tell what the responsibility thing with that was, but, uh, yeah, if that's just a supervision comment, then, okay.
All right.
When they put in the water and sewer, they're gonna be, you know, disturbing the sides of the road.
Yeah.
And anything with scenery, if, if for some reason, the, the, I call them rock fences, but stone walls were taken down, they had to be restored into the exact way they were. So.
Okay.
Seven, the location where erosion control blanks are replaced must be identified in the plan sheet or by notation of detail. Okay, good, I'm good with that. Um, it's understood the town legal council's comment on the configuration of lots offers to deters to the board and town councils regarding this configuration. This gets back to, remember when?
Estate lots.
Yeah, the estate lots.
Our, on, on a previous version of this subdivision, our response was that these, uh, lots are all existing and approved and reported at the registry of deeds.
Yeah, we've been through this, we beat this one to death.
Yeah. Okay.
They, they, someone couldn't, um, subdivide their own property to, in this case.
It says right on their deed.
It's right on the, on the recorded plan too. This is it.
All right, now the meet where I was not happy last time around, which was a stormwater management. Kevin said the site is tributary to a critical area. And it's referencing handbook, this is out of my skill set, so I'm gonna defer to you.
That's kind of a nerd thing, that's just taking note, on the stormwater management, if you bring it to a critical area, it raises the, um, risk of a storm free. It's just a note.
Okay. Uh.
So do you need it in writing from DCR or EEP?
That was gonna be my next question, do we need anything?
Or what happens?
You false, uh, you don't have some DCR here, right?
No, no, DCR.
No, no.
In, in addition to that, it's, it is tributary to a critical area, but it's not near or in a critical area by definition.
Okay.
What's the tributary of the area? Is it the swamp or?
Basically, that water flows downhill essentially, and you.
So, Kevin, do we need a, a note or anything on drawings?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I was just, something in the, in the record.
Okay, that's good enough. The outlet control and detention, oh, this is, uh, this is a discussion about the PVC. I think we've already got agreement from the applicant that will go from PVC to concrete.
Just on the, on the flat end, you, you're aggressive, you want.
No, no, this is the, this is the inlet, the inlet control.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You got a, you got a rise up height that's eight inch PVC. That won't last.
No, I, I agree.
Those are only, they're actually only three and a half feet above ground, and we have a footing detail for them, I believe.
Do all the footings do?
Yeah.
What would you use?
I mean, we've used that.
What would you use? What's that?
Manhole.
We've consistently used plastic in.
We've always used plastic, anyway, this is the first time here.
And Holden.
And Holden, it's only five feet out of there, but the hole's drilled in. So we have a footing detail, that's five.
One of them is, is almost.
Three and a half, no, they're both three and a half. The pipe invert might be five feet, but that's buried by two.
The comment is this, it's an eight inch, eight inch PVC pipe. Sun, wind, rain, uh, ten years, I don't know, but it's not a long life.
Tolerated.
What's that?
Salt won't deteriorate.
Salt won't deteriorate. Sunlight doesn't help PVC.
I know that for a fact.
Sooner or later, they're gonna fall over and no one will fix it.
I, I, I mean, I guess.
How much, how much a four foot diameter manhole?
More than that PVC.
Yeah.
Of course it is.
It's, it's, it's about seven hundred bucks, but you gotta install it, so it's, by the time you've done it, it's fifteen hundred.
Five hundred.
But the manhole itself is, you're talking about, it's gonna have holes in it, right?
Yeah, you're gonna get holes in it.
Cool, thanks, that's fine, do it all the time.
I would, I, I, I'll ask the board, but I, I, I think that's a compromise for some of the waivers, I guess I'm looking for.
I, I don't care, I mean, what is it, one or two of them?
Two.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's not the end of the world, but, you know, do what you want.
Would it be more of a like a pit?
No.
Just a.
No, but I mean.
Four foot manhole with holes drilled at the right elevation, water goes in.
Yeah.
Water goes out.
Please, it might be partially buried for the pipe outlet. Please, it might be partially buried for the pipe outlet.
I got you, yeah, I got you, okay, all right, that's fine, those are fine, we'll compromise.
All right.
No problem.
The next one. Let me just inject that. Is that something that we're going to do throughout from this point on? No more PVC, please? I just, I'm concentrating on this one. Okay, nevermind. I, I don't, I don't want to go into a standard.
That and flared ends, PVC or HDP for the flared ends have been used in town quite consistently.
Oh, but we'll put concrete.
I, I don't mind the concrete.
I'm a case by case person, and this case is what we're working on. Let's go to the next one. What someone else does is none of us.
If the subdivision regs come out with that, then we can talk about that then.
The next one, Kevin, this is again out of the HydroCAD calculations are based on type two, type three distribution is required.
Just a, just a, again, it's a nerd thing, nerd to nerd.
Okay.
He knows.
That's just an update to the report that'll go in.
We need to share with you, buddy.
You know we're doing this. Yeah, if you can just get that, because all I wanted is in the record, so we've got it in the updated calculations in the record, so anything down the road, we've got it, so that's, that's all I'd ask for. Ah, there's only a couple, six more left. General comments, Hilltop Drive and all social, we jointly owned. This is about the HOA. I, I think I want to be adamant about this, that we as a board, and I'll take feedback, are going to put a lot of teeth in this one. So the deeds are going to reference, and, and respectively, Clea, I, I don't want to go through what I went through, and I, and I'm not, it's, this is not a dig. But we went through Bryce Lemon.
Usually when it starts that way, it is, but okay.
Yeah, yeah, maybe that's, maybe that's a bad way of starting out. I, I want upfront, I mean, there's not a hundred houses here. I just want to make sure that they know that this HOA that they're buying into is a serious HOA, that they're going to be required to maintain this in their timeframe. I mean, if they live there twenty years, there's a good chance that they're going to be paying for that road to be fixed.
This is a way different HOA than Bryce Estates. Bryce Estates had no, it was no fees. This is going to come with a fee, and normally with an HOA like this, it's the same as you have for a condo. What happens is, if they don't pay that fee, goes, they go, the homeowners association goes in front of the bank, and they, they can, they can foreclose them right out of there, so.
Or mechanics leans, I've seen that, too.
Well, no, but I mean, in this case, in most cases with an HOA, if you don't pay the fee, you go, and that fee goes in front of the bank.
Oh, okay.
On the title, on the chain of titles.
I like that one better.
No, that's, that's the way they work, I mean, when there's a fee involved.
Other than what Lenny Gengel had.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, the concern we had that we brought, that, when I talked to Tim about this, is somewhere down the road, somewhere down, down the line, that road is going to need to be replaced, and it's going to be a lot of money, it could be.
Twenty, thirty thousand dollars?
Per person, per homeowner. And if you don't have a, a solid homeowner association with teeth, then seven guys are standing there saying, let's do it, and eight and nine for one reason, don't, won't go with it, and it won't get done. So you need a mech, it's like mini government, you just need a mechanism to force everybody to pay up when it's got to be done. You know, majority rule, all in favor, you know.
Yeah.
But it starts from day one.
Correct, you got to start building.
Three months, you pay it in, and then, you know, when, twenty years down the road, when you need to grind it and pave it, you got fifty or seventy-five grand or a hundred grand sitting there, and it's done. And it, it has to have, I mean, our own bank accounts, they have to have a manager, it's, it's a, it's just, this one is set up just like a condo.
And that was, that was sort of my point I was getting at, is when you're selling the properties, it, it's got to be upfront, they've got to, because this is unlike anything we've done in Rutland, in my, at least my experience, we've never basically said, there's going to be a bank, and there's not going to be five hundred dollars in it, there's going to be thousands in it, and you're going to pay into it every month, every quarter, and that'll be decided when we get to the HOA, but I want to make sure they're aware of that, and that's, that's one point, at least to the board, I was, like I said, Kevin and I talked, I want to make sure that, I mean, maybe it's seven years, who knows? It's ten years, whatever, that that road's got to have some work done to it, there's money to get it done.
It's, um.
And all people are bought into it.
You guys have done one, the second half of general, of Glenwood Place extension from lot six to lot ten or eleven. That is, they have to maintain and plow, that road is private from there on, and that, that homeowners association is the same one as this one. It was five lots.
I don't remember that one.
Yeah, and, and I tried to get the town to at least plow it.
Yeah.
They said, no way, so.
Okay, I don't want to berate this.
No, that's all right, but that's, we've done one, you've done five lots, I can go at least that way.
The next one.
My big question is, do we want to see this document prior to approval, or is it going to be a condition of approval?
Oh, that's a good question.
Place before building permits, it would be nice to ensure that it's. Speaking of having teeth.
Yeah. Yeah.
And we're writing it, too, right, or it's going to?
No, 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 the applicant writes, our attorneys, just basically the town attorneys looking over and give us advice, or. It's a good question. Me, I'm a pain in the ass, I want it done before I approve the subdivision, but I'm going to leave it up to the board and what they think.
I think that's the safest way for us.
Let me make it easy, I'll give it, I have it already done.
Okay.
I'll give it to you.
Dick, you think that's fair to have that?
Yeah, like I say, you don't want another Lenny Gengel, so.
Yeah, all right, good enough. So I guess, Kevin, a note for that is, is it's going to be before approval.
So, so just to talk about that for one second, on Bryce Estates, the reason you guys started with the HOAs in the first place is because detention ponds were on people's individual lots, and it was those one person who had the detention pond on their lot was responsible for it.
That's not fair.
This, it's not fair, so all that HOA does in Bryce Estates, and I think you guys all know this, is that any drainage that's off the street, being detention ponds or whatever it may be, everybody's responsible, not just the poor person who owns the detention pond on their lot. Those HOAs are fair and reasonable, and they don't ever cost anybody any money, and they're done, I, I can't think of a subdivision in the last twenty years, I haven't put one on.
And I don't have a problem with that, but with this private way.
This is different.
Yeah, thi, this is one that we've, we've really got to make sure they understand.
Right.
And again, I'm not.
No, no, I know.
You sent me the documents, I reviewed them, I believe that it was an attorney's mistake of not reviewing that, that's, and that, again, that's my personal opinion, I don't want to speak for the entire board, but that was my personal opinion, it was in there, it was available, and again, I don't want to berate that. The next one was, in the area of cuts on Hilltop, Station zero zero to Station four plus fifty, the road should be crowned. Catch basins called out in the gutter lines on both sides of the road, during winter months, snow mountain flow under the streets in sheets, across the road surface leaned icing conditions with temperature drops. That's going to be taken care of. It's going to be taken care of, that's easy enough, I'm good with that, okay? I'm bored okay, I mean, all right. Driveways at lots one, two, and three should have call firts to convey swale flow beneath them.
Showed up, we'll put that on.
All right, geez, this is easy. Is recommend the applicant, applicant coordinate with the DPW and its wastewater consultant to evaluate potential effects of sewer extensions uh, and existing sewer pump stations, which is over in Grizzly, that area, and to assess the proposed sewer extension for conformance to the town requirements.
I, I had already gone over this with Joe in detail, because we were going to bring sewer and water up there for the individual lots if we had to.
Individuals, I remember that, thousands of rides.
Yeah, so I mean, he already proved where it was going to come up the street and all the others, that's all done, it's just.
I, I have to inject here. Legally, how close can a sewerage go to a water well?
I personally do not know that.
I can answer that, but.
So we can go right on topic.
I could answer that, ten feet.
It's ten feet.
I, I cannot answer that, I'm not, I'm not.
The Attorney General's office.
It's ten feet. Glenn can tell you, we can tell you it's ten feet.
Is that you, Ken? Can I get, can I get the documentation? Who's the engineering firm, by the way? Is anyone here represent the engineering firm? This is why I sat here, just for this one little section.
Can we, can we, I, I don't mean to be a pain, but can we do that, like when you open up to the?
Yeah, I, hold on to that thought, I got three more to go, and then we're going to come back to that, because that's an important point.
It's beyond important, because we're going to have to talk about lawyer things and stuff where the town can actually, if basic, no, let me just finish here, all right? Listen, if you put this stuff in, and all of a sudden I'm told, when I'm selling my house, I have to basically tie into sewerage, that's going to cost me thirty, forty thousand dollars, okay? I had nothing to do with that. I, you approved that, so who's going to take up that cost if that becomes that?
It's not.
I, 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 again, I don't, and the board.
There's four of us affected here, just four houses.
Because the board doesn't, this board doesn't have anything to do with water and sewer, so I cannot.
Now, let's get the EPA, let's get an EPA person in here, and we'll sit down and we'll go through all that stuff.
What he's talking about is, you know, if they run sewer in front of your house, you got to connect them.
Let's just get an EPA person, and let's just basically figure out where we're going with this, okay? I can make that formal request, I'll go sit down with the town and I'll do that, I'll call the Attorney General's office, and we'll move forward with that.
Why are you being such a dick? Christ.
I, I, again.
That's what happens when it doesn't go through the chain, you got to shut the fucking guy up.
Yeah. Give you a little laugh, too. And the point is, is that I, I want the board to know that we don't have control over water and sewer. That is the DPW, Kevin, anybody here in board, tell me I'm wrong, and I don't have control of, of, of water and sewer regs from the planning board.
They have a consultant.
Yeah.
DPW has a consultant for sewer water.
And that is Weston and Sampson, if I'm not mistaken, Weston and Sampson can make that call, and I wouldn't, I, well, I was trying to keep you two out of this, because you designed it, the comments come from the DPW, and we send them to the comments for the DPW, if it's out of compliance, I'm expecting them and their engineer Weston and Sampson to give comments back to us.
But what he was talking about, just so you know, when you, when, when a town puts a sewer line in front of your house.
Betterment.
They, they charge a betterment fee. He thinks he's got to pay a betterment fee, he just walked out of here pissed off, because he has, he has no idea what he's talking about. There's no betterment fee, there's no betterment fee involved in this. He, the town's not putting a sewer line in, and they're not going to charge you, when you sell your house, they're not going to charge the guy who buys it.
We, but it's, it's well, though, isn't it?
He's got a, what happens is, the, the good part about this, if we run a sewer line by there, and he's got a failed septic, he doesn't have to pass Title V, ties into the sewer line for what, two grand, and it's done. There's no forty thousand dollar fees, the guy doesn't know what he's talking about, he's cool.
The point being, Clea, is that it was brought to us that the sewer lines were with, too close to his well. I don't, again, I don't want to comment that, because I can't, I need, I need somebody from the DPW to tell me that, that's not.
It's not allowed, the Board of Health reviews those plans, anything within ten feet of a well, any sewer within ten feet, a hundred feet, won't get passed unless it's within a hundred feet of a well, but it's ten feet, right? The septic system is a hundred feet, has to be a hundred feet, but a sewer line to a water line is ten feet, it's only ten feet, that's it.
Sewer line to a water line, ten feet. Unless you're involved, just do.
Both A and, I'm sorry, both A and B of that comment, I think will be addressed when you get your sewer extension permit, when you go to put it in.
Yeah, I don't know if, if it was even required, because they're front lots. So we wouldn't, you know, it, it, it wasn't required, Joe, Joe just said he wanted an easement. That's what he said, I want an easement up the middle of the, I want you to give me an easement over the road in case I got to get in there to fix the sewer, that was it.
Over your road.
Yeah.
Over the private.
Over the private driveway, that's it.
Look afraid of any other, I mean.
I haven't run into this before on this board, but. Because we send these to the DPW, Board of Health, police, fire for review, and if we don't get any comments back. Yeah, and to, to Kevin's point, I'm presuming that the, the DPW would have any questions they have, they go to Weston and Sampson. In Joe's case, he's a PE, he could probably do it himself, but I'm sure he probably sent it to Weston and Sampson. So I guess I'm looking, I don't want to belittle the comment, but I, I can't, in my opinion, as a chair and then the board, we can't comment on water and sewer in this town, it's just not our authority. I mean, if I'm wrong, I'm pretty sure.
I was on yesterday.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem asking the question to the, to the DPW director of the department, I don't have a problem with that.
Glenn was edging along.
Yeah. I guess, who the, how the hell do we do that? We don't have a Dave anymore.
We need to always keep informed, hiring a new guy.
I will talk about that later. Jesus, I don't know. I guess I'll ask Kevin, is that something? You could, you, I, I mean, is that, is that, somebody help me, is that in Chris?
We've, I've done public sewer projects, public sewer projects, spending public monies.
Yeah.
And they will require, if the sewer passes in front of someone's house, that person must connect into the sewer. In this case, this is private money being expended, I don't, I don't think there's any requirement, and certainly, I mean, I think the planning board could send a, a letter to the DPW to say, if there's any requirements for homeowners to connect into the sewer, we ask you leave it to the discretion of the homeowner.
Okay.
And it's a betterment fee, he's, this guy's talking about a betterment fee, eh? There's no betterment fee, I can tell you that right now, there's no betterment.
We ran sewer line down Main Street.
I know, and I didn't, nobody charged a betterment fee.
For three miles.
Yeah.
The old fire station's looking into that sucker.
Kidding. So I, I think just to, to satisfy me, and I'll ask the board, I don't know how the hell, without Dave here, or without a planner, do we, i- is this in Chris's wheelhouse, we send it to Chris?
If, if I may, I, I don't know that this is necessarily something Chris is going to be able to answer, and given that we're close to hiring a new DPW director, perhaps we wait, or collaborate with Austin, or perhaps wait for that gentleman to reach out to the town, if he'd like a follow up on that answer, since we can't leave Austin with responsibility.
Yeah, that's what I keep going back to, it's not my, but I, I don't want to, he was here at a meeting, he asked a question. Um, it's about the plans, I'd, I'd like to at least.
I tried to give him an answer, but he stormed out of here.
He didn't want the answer. I'm trying to explain to him that we don't have authority to make calls on water and sewer, and that seemed to.
You know who the sewer commissioners are?
Oh, it's a select board.
That's where you go, and they go, and they go, that's who, that's who you apply to, I mean, that's, that's it in a nutshell, that's nothing to do with you guys.
Yeah, I'm, I'm asking, what's the will of the board, do we send in a letter, just, or do we?
Ignore them. I got to go through the permit process anyway, I guess, but I, I, Joe was good, Joe told me I was all set.
Guess how long will it take to get an answer, you know?
Well, without a DPW chief, we're sort of dead right now in the water.
Did the guy have a hand dug well, artesian well?
For, I didn't, I would just apply for a sewer permit for each lot.
That's a problem.
There are already lots, so if I apply for it, I pay a three, it's, I think it's a two thousand dollar water and two thousand dollar sewer fee, but there are already lots, so.
Don't get eyes crossed, I want to get, I want to get him an answer, but.
Sewer line, and he told me.
So it's a connection permit.
It's a connection permit.
It's just a very long one. That's all it is.
That's what Joe told me.
Have that permit.
I don't apply for it till I put a house on it.
You know, I don't think, I don't think the, the planning board really has anything to say about sewer, if, if they, they can put in, he could do septics if he wanted to, and all we could do is shrug. I don't think it's a planning board's call, I mean, it's, I don't think there's anything wrong with the board sending a communication to DPW to say, we hope you.
That's what I was getting at, Kevin, I just, I'd like to, in the effort to have open communication between different departments, I'd like to at least make them aware of this, so they don't get blindsided, so.
General comments on the relationship between, you know, houses, you know, particularly on, on wells.
In this, in this area, yeah. Okay. Tamika, can you put that in the notes? Because I'm going to have to think about how the heck do, do I, do I talk to Austin and Chris together, and make them aware of it that this is coming, so.
Can I, can I just maybe?
Hop in, I, I, I'm struggling with this.
These are all front lots, okay? They only require a connection permit for water and for sewer, because they're already, they're, they're just front lots, it's a long connection, it's coming from Bear Hill, but it doesn't, they don't require an extension permit, because it's not really an extension of the sewer, it's just, we're just connecting in. This is what I went over with Joe long before I ever came here, because I was going to just do the individual lots. So it, you know, I was, Joe, I want to hook into water and sewer, do it this way, okay, and then just apply for a sewer connection permit.
Okay.
So that, that's what he told me at the time.
It is, it is what you're putting in, though, it's still going to be public sewer, though, right?
Yes, but, but, but we have to pay to connect into it, yeah, and that's what he told me, I, I mean, I'm just telling you what he told me.
And the houses alongside, if their septic fails, they don't have to connect unless they have no other option, say they can't get a perk test, and it's either a tight tank or connect a sewer.
You're not going to put a tight tank in.
Yeah, that's the only time they have to by, by law, connect to it.
And, 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 and when it's private, there's no betterment fee.
Well, I, I think.
Then there is.
I think the answer is just in the benefit of communicating with the DPW, just tell them this has come up, and let them know about it, and please be aware of this situation, and I don't know what else to do other than that.
That's it, that's it.
And, and we'll take any information, give back to us, because I don't know a lot about wells, and, and it, for me, it's knowledge, and knowledge is always good to have, so if it comes up again, like Dick said, we're, at least can direct them the right. So if it comes up again, like Dick said, we're, at least can direct them the right place or have a, a, a small answer, so. Okay, um, where the heck was I?
Fifteen.
Fif, yeah, sixteen.
Same thing.
Same thing. All right. Uh, seventeen, authorization and additional easement, right?
Uh, for the work proposed on the property, thirty-five written out.
That's George Jones and I've already spoken.
Okay. What, Kevin, I'm, is that just documentation we need?
Yeah. These, these, we're with the homeowner.
If I could just, Klee, on a lot of these authorizations, if you could just, since we don't have a planner yet, get that in some type of writing to Tamika so we can put it in the file. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, I, I believe the easement may already be recorded, but that would be the, that would be the proof. It has to be on record, so.
As, as long as we've got that, I just wanna make sure the file's complete, so it's, it's airtight if we run into any issues. That's all I'm asking. And the last one, closed stormwater basins do not have fences around. The board may want to consider. I want twenty-two foot razor wired fences all around these. I'm kidding.
Bob life. Rolls on the top.
Anybody, I, I mean, I don't think we've required that in the past.
Not, not until DC, uh, puts it around Long Pond, then we'll do it.
Like that.
Now that I've completed the Quinn report, um, a public comment on everything we've gone over, please don't hesitate. Well, first I will, there's nobody on the TV. So it's just the people that are here. Anybody?
Okay.
Step into my office.
All right, so I'm, I'm Kurt Groll, fifty-two Brentwood Drive.
Thank you.
Okay. So I have one concern I'd like to discuss and two questions. So the concern, um, Tamika, if you bring up the plan that shows, um, I think it's the second page or third page, that shows the overview of the storm, showing the stormwater management. These are the drawings I'm referring to.
Drawings, yeah.
The package.
Looking at the, the little ones?
Well, I just wanted everyone to see it at the same time.
Sorry, there's just a delay.
It's our internet service. We only paid for, uh, forty-eight hundred baud, so it's a little slow. Serial.
It's a stormwater.
Oh, it's a stormwater hole.
It's good stuff.
Yeah.
As boring as it can be. That's fun, interesting stuff.
I'm pretty sure.
Um, I had mer, I had merged them all into one PDF, yeah, when I put them online. Sorry, it just doesn't let me scroll very smoothly through the list.
Now Klee sees what he's paying for.
Good, let her keep going for twenty minutes.
He's charged you by the pound.
By the word.
He charged me by the word, I think.
By the letter.
Weren't you making septic's up there might not be bad?
All right, so.
Here in the area, if you go down, uh, next page.
There we go.
Is it, just one, Kurt?
Give me one second. Uh, next page. Bingo, okay. Could you zoom in?
He lives right across the street from this.
Can you zoom in to this?
Yeah.
So.
Sorry.
The topic I'm bringing up is, my concern is, let's just blow that up.
You got it, look, more.
Uh, more, you're good. Okay, that level spreader, which takes all the water outflow from both detention ponds, right?
No, no, just the section of the road from.
Just downhill, just a whole path.
Section of road.
Not the whole.
To stretch that road.
Oh, the detention ponds go elsewhere?
Just in case.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So that easement, uh, is between the two properties. It's thirty feet wide, fifteen foot on each side. When I overlay the survey of my land with that drawing, uh, it shows, if I'm reading it correctly, between elevation ten eighty-four to ten eighty, uh, it shows that level spreader occupying the same space as my well.
Hmm, that can't.
Oof, that would be bad.
That can't, no.
I don't, that's, I don't think that's the case, but.
Well, um, yeah, so my, my well is at ten eighty-three, at exactly seven feet off of the center line of that easement. So. It's pretty much overlaid.
And I did your septic.
Yeah.
So I should know where that is. Yeah, that would be in the center of that level.
Spread if I'm doing my math right.
It's not quite the level, I mean, not quite the center, but it's, it's occupying the same space. And so. You know, I could, I could propose different ways. We could discuss about, you know, but obviously you guys know better than I do.
Well, if that's a fact, what we'll do is we'll have to just slide that, because Klee owns that lot.
Right.
So we can make that, definitely avoid that.
If that's the case, we'll fix it.
I'll make sure, I don't, I'm glad you, you told me started building this, brought that out.
Can I, is it okay if I go up and talk about it? One of the other things I thought of is that, okay, down here, off here, you can't see it. The tributary is a stream that runs this way.
Under his bridge.
Yeah, right, and it's a tributary to the Ware watershed. So there's a Zone A surface level water protection area aligned goes down the center line of that tributary, out two hundred feet in each direction. Okay, so obviously your stormwater can't drain directly into that two hundred foot buffer from.
No, it can't drain into the hundred foot of the wetland resource area. Says two hundred feet, but their jurisdiction is only a hundred feet from.
The edge of wetland.
The edge of the wetland that goes with that. So.
What I was gonna propose is, um, as, is, if something, if you could consider to see if it's feasible, would be, I'll let you just preface it for a moment. In my research on wells and, and surface drainage, I understand that, you know, when a storm event occurs and there's a slug of water that comes down there, that's not gonna just, you know, go straight into the ground, obviously, right?
Oh, right.
It's gonna create a groundwater mound underground, which is like a little mountain of water that's gonna be stationary and it's gonna change all the forces in terms of how water flows under the ground. And it can even cause water to flow up gradient as opposed to down gradient. So it's out of a level spreader into the ground, just get the mound of water under the ground and it can force that stormwater that's now under the ground instead of going down, goes back up, goes out laterally. It can go anywhere depending on the fractures in the, um, in the soil. So. I measured this from here. So my, my well is fifteen, sorry, it's eighteen feet off the travel surface of the road. So it's right around in here. Would it be possible to take this whole structure and just, and move the level spreader down?
As long as we're outside that hundred foot, we can slide it down.
When I thought it was, well, according to DEP, they show the Zone A coming two hundred feet.
That's a discussion I'm in with.
So even the two hundred foot boundary, which is, you know, let's say it's here, just for sake of argument, when I measure from the road down to that, the longest line here, the, the center between our lots, that would be a hundred and seven feet, which from my well then means we'd still have eighty-nine feet to play with to bring this down. But now you've got another hundred and eighty-nine or hundred, hundred, twelve, hundred and eighty-nine feet to play with.
Locate your well, show it on there and we're not gonna put that, yeah, we're gonna be below, down gradient of your well.
Yeah.
From that, that's not an issue at all.
It's gonna be down from your well, so there's, okay, go away.
Not much water's gonna puddle there, Kurt, by the way. That is pretty steep.
Steep stuff.
So that's gonna hit the level spreader and go, whoosh.
Well, we'll get it, we'll get it beyond your well.
We'll put it beyond your well, though.
Definitely.
And I was really concerned with, I thought it was the detention ponds if we're going there, cause that'd be.
No, no, in fact, I poo-pooed that.
All right, sir. Can I get that real quick? The other two are not, I'm concerned.
The other one was, let's see, you brought up, oh, actually, could you go to the one with the, um, utilities? That show on Britnall, um, also, sorry. I'm not sure which page.
That's okay, yeah, I'm not sure which page, I'm kinda just scrolling and then.
It's on a site plan or a profile?
Pipeline on Britnall.
The waters.
No, no, it's not this one. One of the shows, the sewer water.
Yeah, I think it just went by it.
Went by it.
I think it was the one above.
Yeah, the one above this one.
One more, right there, that's coming.
That's, that's the one you're talking about?
Yeah.
It comes up the, uh, comes down the old road, comes up Britnall to the site.
And your houses.
I thought it was a different one, we can use this part, go, argue.
Don't care yourself.
Discussion, yeah. Um, if I read it correctly, and this isn't this one, but I thought I saw, I think you have the, um, utilities coming up on the south side of Britnall, on my side of the road.
What utilities?
Uh, sure.
So it should come, it's coming up this, I'd say right there, the dock line. See what says SMH?
Oh, yeah, so it's this one here?
That's your side.
Right, right.
So we're on the other side. The other side.
Oh, you're on the other side?
Yes.
Perfect, okay, all right, yeah, cause there's no rock wall there. I was gonna, I thought it was on the south side and I was gonna ask if you could dig that, that close to the rock wall, okay. Uh, and then the last one was something I thought of when you were talking about HOA. Would it be possible to, uh, raid into the HOA that the homeowners need to have the, uh, storm scepter maintained on an hourly basis?
Oh, yeah.
That's an offering to ma, offering to maintenance, operation and maintenance plan. And they're required to ma, ma, and the homeowners association's responsible for maintaining those devices.
That's the cost that comes out of the bank that they will have.
Even in all the subdivisions we do, they're required to do that.
And, and homeowners have to schedule that with the maintainer, or is it?
It's up to them, but yeah. I mean, it's in, there's a maintenance agreement, you know, operation and maintenance agreement, it's in the stormwater thing. And, and it's, it's printed, these guys, you know, it's reviewed and that's part of it.
Anybody else?
Glenn.
Glenn Cobbler, um, Main Street, you're all, I'm also in a butter, uh, to this project. The waiver requested for the width of the road. What is the amount that, uh, what is the width of the road, uh, prior to the waiver? What would it be?
There's no waiver.
There's no way of that, it meets the regs.
Yeah.
Eighteen feet, is it?
Yeah, yeah.
That meets the regs?
For less than twenty houses.
Yeah.
For less than twenty, correct.
We know, we normally do a call.
The question I, I just, just popped in my mind about it was that you were talking about it comes down to a narrow, uh, cut down near the street and there was talk about ice and drainage. Is eighteen feet sufficient in a condition where you might have that steep a slope? You know, if a truck is coming down, it's eight feet, eight foot six wide with mirrors, and there's another vehicle coming up, is, should that be wider maybe at the entrance? I know there's restrictions on that, but.
I'm gonna radius this.
Okay.
So it is wider right at the interface of Britnall and the proposed driveway.
All right, well, I, I guess, I'm not talking about the eighteen feet, but is there sufficient room that a, a vehicle could pull to the side to, you know, to avoid any kind of a collision? Is, is the side of the road have a little bit of a shoulder?
I don't think so, the, the drawings I've seen is it's.
Is there a curb?
It's tight, it's, it's, there's no doubt about it, it's tight. The, but it's, it's your rules, it's your subdivision regulations, it's not.
Yeah, no, I, I realize the regulations, I, I mean, I wasn't.
So you're asking it from a safety standpoint.
Yeah, is that something that.
I, I can, I can say that the, we, we actually went over this with the, my concern was a fire chief with a big hole fire truck. And Seth had come back and said that he had no issues with the proposed, actually, he was okay with eleven and a half and we weren't. So getting it to ten even gives him more latitude, cause I was worried about the big pumper truck getting up and down there and he didn't have an issue with that. Cause that was one of my concerns and, uh, the police I'm not worried about. Um, he did say, you know, the ambulance, ice, there could be issues, but there could be issues going up and down driveways in Rutland these days with this, with the slopes that they have, so. Again, he didn't, if I'm not mistaken, he gave us a thumbs up with what this design was from his perspective, so. That was my main concern, Glenn, with, with this design.
They did lower it down because if he drove up on anything, you know, there's something about the wheels would come off the ground.
Yeah.
Right. Because of that entrance, we had to make sure that.
He did that.
His ladder truck can get up that without getting hung up.
Correct.
Well, I think the flag that's a rumpel, you know, you're talking about, you know, rubbish truck coming down and running into some ballards and is, is that something that has been looked at and obviously it sounds like you have.
From the, from the fire perspective, yes. It's, I mean, I, I think about this, I know Dick and I've talked about it, that you gotta, you know, uh, Amazon big delivery truck coming down there in the winter on ice and I'm not saying that they're the best drivers in the world, but off on the side and I, the more I think about the ballards, I think it's probably more of a safety risk than a safety preventer cause truck hits a ballard, I guarantee you there's gonna be some serious damage. So, um, and again, on that road, I can tell you from what the gentleman that was here, my perspective, I've had to pull the UPS driver out of Britnall a few times.
I'm more concerned about the Swiss driver with, uh, GPS.
Yeah.
They have it up on the back, but, no, all right, I, I just, I was just wondering if that was looked into.
It was, and, yeah, with, that, that was my main concern and I think the board's was too, was with the, uh, with the fire.
Fire handling, that's what we asked that first phase if we come up with.
Give us his opinion. And that was on the earlier design, so th- this is even better off and like Julian said, they lowered it based on his concerns with ladder truck.
And was I right in hearing that there, there is a curb at the bottom?
Yep.
It's so steep.
And we got catch bases on both sides. And we're gonna have them on both sides now with a twenty-five foot radius curve, so.
Any more, is that it?
Was it a waiver from twenty-five feet?
No, Kevin, the, the waiver you're thinking about is at the property line, not at the street.
Okay.
So we fit everything within the right ways.
Anybody else? Looking in the back corner, cause, uh.
Any comments?
Um, any more from the board?
Just, just wondering about that gentleman, what he's.
Shouldn't have left.
Yeah, I, I sat and watched it through.
That's why I said, where are you going? I mean, I, I, nobody answered him. Alls I wanted to do is follow a little protocol, you know? When people do that, I mean, it messes things up. Everything should go through the chair and, and, and he, he's speaking out of turn.
I gave him some latitude and he got out of control and that's why I was gonna grab the norm gamble.
You should have, you should have thrown the son of a bitch out.
This young lad's gonna be the first one to use it, not me.
He was a little upset because he wanted to come in on Zoom, but the wrong information was on the, so.
But he's here, so.
So he came. Alls he had to do was wait to speak his turn, everybody got to talk, but let's have a, let's have a meeting. We're in the middle of one thing, he changes it to another, you try, I mean, it's a pain in the ass.
I guess I'll ask, uh, any more comments from the board? I, I, I do not wanna close this hearing until.
We can't close the hearing.
Please, no, not yet.
Until the comments are back to.
For Kevin.
Yeah, I need you, Kevin, so.
Please send your letter with.
If we don't have anything more tonight, I'd, I'd like to entertain a um continuance.
Yes.
To July eleventh at six thirty.
Six thirty, I'm good.
That's pretty soon.
We're gonna be fine.
We're we're gonna be fine.
Are you guys gonna?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna try to get you something.
I ask you, are you gonna be fine?
Well, actually, I'm uh.
The other date would be.
I'm gone next week.
July twenty-fifth would be the next one.
I'm gone next week.
Yeah, so then. Just go to the, go to the next one, that's fine, so whenever, whenever the second meeting in July is, is fine.
July twenty-fifth at six thirty.
And and that's well within the sixty days, right, we don't need an extension yet, right?
You just opened the hearing.
I know, so, but but, yeah.
If we have to go, if we have to go past.
You're fine.
We have enough time.
It's a whole new hearing, right?
Yeah, this is a brand new hearing.
If we have to, we can extend the final action deadline at the next hearing.
Six twenty-five. All right, I think uh I will relinquish my command and turn back over to the. Oh, we got it, I'm sorry.
Well, yeah.
You may.
Do I get a second?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion? Uh, vote, please.
Hi.
Aye.
I like that, aye.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
I was unexpected.
Kevin, sorry, thank you.
That was gonna happen.
All as long as we're getting Carl's cost, not your cost.
Oh, no, no.
President's are more expensive than ancient years.
Thank you, everybody.
Um.
Thank you, Norm, for helping out.
Uh.
You gotta, you gotta report Kevin for a report, so. I'll, I'll get out of this, because now it's Norm's.
Okay, so.
Yeah, thanks.
Once you guys want, you don't want. Anybody wants to take?
No, I was gonna tell them, can they get us uh, get Tamika?
We just have the electronic copy.
Do you want this one?
Uh, you, do you got it up?
No, it's fine. I got electronic anyway, so.
That's the latest in the range.
It is. It is missing a page.
Before they get out of here.
Shouldn't be that complicated, folding up instead of.
No, no, I was gonna ask, can you get the board a, a full D-size set of drawings with the number two, if you don't have one?
Yes.
Okay.
Very good, thanks.
Oh, we might as well wait till the.
Till the revisions, yeah, we're gonna get everything when the, whole set.
Next.
Okay.
Next we have. HOA is gonna be, to be handled by the.
Yeah.
More harsh to drive extension. And we do have a. Five from the other one. The boundary of the line, and. It's your front, sitting here. I know from Quinn, uh, there was definitely some things that were resolved. But I know. I gotta go back in. This is the only one, I got, I think, uh, somewhere. Just going over these. Uh, number one, though, for the comment on the uh. Right, the road width is eighteen feet. I remember discussing that.
The existing one was sixteen, so we're giving them. We give them two feet.
No sidewalks, once again, there are no sidewalks anywhere else there, so. Uh, reinforced concrete, storm drains, we requested the, the high density, uh, polyethylene. And we have been approving that, pretty much routinely.
Yeah.
Except for tonight.
Except for tonight.
But that can change.
What's that?
This is the, this is the updated drain, right?
I'm sorry, which, which comment is it?
Uh, three.
Three.
This is the same, Kevin, that we just went over?
No, it's different.
Okay.
This is the piping, not the uh.
Oh, I'm fine with that.
Cause this piping is buried, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Again, the only comment I have is the outlets, I'm I'm recommending the flat end sections be concrete, not plastic.
Okay, I guess we'll do.
That's what you guys want, you want concrete?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure?
Sure about it, really, 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 really?
I'm taking pictures when I see the next, the next time I see a PVC or an HTPE flat end section, beat to hell.
Concrete.
Just for the record.
We will put that, and if everybody's happy with that, we'll add that.
You know, what what I mean, very plastic is fine, it probably will.
Well, it's fine, it'll last longer than concrete.
It'll probably last longer than.
Yeah.
Human.
Yeah.
Occupations. It's just sunlight?
Yeah.
So you guys wanna do a test on this one?
We'll do this one, we'll do this, we'll do this one with plastic and see what happens in forty years, and we'll all get together. Oh, you never know. Oh, you never know, then we'll know, that, tonight, we made a decision, one project with concrete, one with flat, with plastic. Who's better? It's up to you guys.
Security barriers and the covered outlets, again, that's kind of been the usual for us.
Yeah.
Headwalls and covered ends, uh, don't let them go. They want uh, clear end section, and move headwalls, I think we just.
We don't want headwalls, it's either plastic or concrete.
We just went through that with hilltop.
Yeah, do we do concrete? That's, I guess, Norm the question.
No, we don't use, we don't use headwalls.
Correct.
Flared ends.
Flared end. Now, is it plastic or concrete?
Yeah.
Kevin likes concrete.
And.
It's no HOA on this involvement, if this is a, this is a personal, yeah, more or less.
Well, this is gonna be town owned, yeah, this will be town owned.
Well, not really, it's still drainage, it's.
Good luck with that.
Uh, right, unfortunately.
I think, I think you have to assume the town will own and maintain it. I mean, I know that there's some effort to not have that be the case, but ultimately, I think the town will own it. I I would want you to treat all that as if the town would own it.
Yeah, all right, um, concrete completely throughout the whole thing.
No, we don't wanna do that. Reinforced concrete on the end, that's reinforced Kevlar concrete.
All right, so we'll, we'll add that to it, that's not an issue.
It's a concrete flat. Concrete flat end.
Yep.
Plastic pipe to concrete flat end, no problem.
Man, I want my streetlights.
Uh, granite curb at the catch basins.
That's a nightmare for the uh, the, the, we got a Cape Cod burn with the.
Yeah.
That costs, that cost Joe more money and damage to uh blades than uh.
My teeth.
Yeah.
Waiver from streetlights, again, though, for the comments.
Yeah, I gotta have at least one.
Cast iron streetlight in this town somewhere.
In front of your house.
Take it to my yard. Just put a cast, put it right there on Palmigussa, baby, cause that curb.
They do it in a new, the whole new rehab here, once you guys, down the whole sidewalk, all the way down.
Well, heights.
We don't have a project manager anymore for Rutland, so I don't know what we're gonna do there.
PM, I'm with Amesberry.
Okay.
Uh, let me see.
Street trees.
Blue trees.
Talking about that awesome, what's that?
Long enough to.
Yeah.
Street trees are different than in front of your house, is that what you mean too? I mean, obviously, people only.
This, this is a true story, Clay's gone, but. It was a project in Holden that they went and they just planted to get the road accepted, the street trees in Holden. Before we even got there, the guy chopped them down. They just put them in the ground, they had the, the, the cables to hold it up, right? And we had to go do this asphalt, and like, Clay, uh, there's two stumps, just like I had two trees and there's two stumps. And the guy said, don't come on my property, okay? Cause they're not in the town right away, they're.
Right away.
They're outside right away, so that was, yeah, an issue, cause now the town's like, well, you don't have street trees, the guy cut them, the stumps are there.
So you should have Amazons and taken pictures as you're putting them in.
I'm like, what are you wanting to do, you guys, not letting us, we're not going on the property, I'm telling you that right now. It's like, oh, that was pretty bad.
Okay, tell the side, what I think, is that standard?
Yeah.
End contents.
What's the next?
What are we missing? I guess, Norm, it says, some comply with the requirements of subdivision plans under.
I think that's just a.
We missing something?
No, they, they, you have standards for what uh, what's required for a subdivision plan. And I went through and said, yeah, they, everything's required.
Okay, thanks. I wasn't reading it right.
Okay, uh, okay, now we're onto a resolved, any erosion controls have been added to the south perimeter of lot one. Uh, here is about these perimeters, lot two are upgraded, and they need no erosion protection. That in the layout of the proposed roadway, um, you know, this is about the, not being uh in the center of the right of way. I don't know, I think we discussed that one.
Yes.
That.
To make a, make it around, you know, to make the roundabout to get back out.
Yeah, so.
Is that handled on the plan?
Yes.
It is, it is.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, gonna be putting water and sewer in there, right?
Yes.
So.
Water and sewer.
What other utilities will?
Move on on.
Would.
I know, just on one side, there's one point that it gets squeezed really narrow, like three feet. You're not gonna get, you might get uh cable TV in there or something.
I was gonna ask, is that above ground, electric and everything?
Underground.
So it is underground. That's on one side, we'll put the electric on the other side, so we're fine. And that's, the only reason why that curb is not to re- reiterate on it is because of the location of the existing house to meet zoning setback. If it's, if it was five feet further, we'd have no issue, but it wasn't, and we're not tearing the house down, cause it's in good shape.
Okay. Okay, uh, homeowners requested a waiver from typical roadway cross section on the subdivision plan that says, resolved, they found, they found it on the. Uh, no further comment, transitions from sixteen feet of the existing road to eighteen feet over the first hundred feet, so it's a gradual increase in the width, uh. So, I don't know, the comment seems to be, yeah, they're doing it the right way.
Yeah, I don't have any issue with that.
Yeah, that's the way to do it. Okay, stormwater hydrology, post development watershed map, leaving catchment basin N two has been corrected, so that's resolved. Emergency overflow discharge is run off in major storm events. Emergency overflow should only operate under emergency conditions, I don't know, design must be provided, uh, blah, 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 uh, can. Kevin, can you explain that one to me?
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty confusing, but basically, basins are designed with a, yeah, they have normal outlets where the water's expected to flow. And they always have an emergency spillway, if the things get clogged or the Noah's Ark floods of whatever, that's a way for the water to overflow. Um, we've always been held with standard that those are only supposed to be used during emergency situations, greater than a hundred year storm. They had water discharging through the overflow, emergency overflow during a hundred year storm. They've, they show two sections in the storm water management handbook, that diagrams that show that. So apparently, the storm water management contemplates that possibility, I don't know that, but it contemplates the possibility. Julian and I talked today, um, we've always held that standard, and we've been held that standard in other communities. He's able to make the change and accommodate that, it's a call, I guess it's up to the board, it's kind of a technical thing, but.
It will work, he says so. He's got the, he's got the letter behind his name I don't have, it's between these two guys. And this is right out of the handbook illustration, so, and I guess my take on it is, at the hundred year, this is the spillway, and we're saying that we're letting some water go over that's controlled by up to four tenths, which is about that much water going over. So it's letting some water go up so it doesn't flood these, the detention pond more, it's part of the whole design system. So we're not adding anything more going out of the site at a hundred years that hasn't been controlled. It's, it's almost like a faucet and opening it up a little bit, versus, nope, keep your hundred feet, hundred years in the pond, and then it can flood over. We're using engineering as they're allowing us to do the same thing, and what that does is it really doesn't do anything other than it does prove out in the report that it works. Um, I guess next time, just like these flared end concrete versus plastic, we'll make sure that, from the beginning, we'll not use that method. But in this case, I don't wanna have to redo this entire.
What he's saying is, it's technically not a violation of storm water management.
I'm fine with it.
So it's, it's.
As long as, this is the one exception of the rule, I'm okay with that.
Well, it's, it's in the rules, so we're following the rules.
So we feel that it meets the rules, but.
It meets the rules, but you're.
In the future, that's what we wanna do.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go the other way.
Yeah, that's, that's all I was getting at, cause I'm going with our engineer, if that's what's, what's going with typical.
If you see me, if you see me jumping up and down, you'll know I'm joking.
Yeah.
I'm not jumping up and down, I'm just.
I respect the wisdom of my elders.
Oh, thanks, there. Thanks, there, young fellow.
Feeling getting deep here.
Really deep. Yeah, we gotta get moving, cause I'm running out of steam.
It's already passed my bedtime.
It's already passed my bedtime.
Okay, number six, another note for the council, I think, maybe, 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 uh, see. Uh, planning and engineering, our best qualifications for how this can be insured on foundations. Is this gonna be a homeowner's type thing?
Not sure about this one.
Well, this is now a typical subdivision, the town's gonna take over the road. How did we do the last one, like Maple Spring, which was the town took over the road, or even Bryce, is there a homeowner for the drainage? Cause that is not a utility.
Bryce, there is.
So, we can do it, it's, I just gotta tell Mr. Beardsley that he's gonna draw up a. In their deeds, they know that that detention pond is part of all three of them, not just the one.
I think that's a fair statement, cause we.
What do you think, Kevin?
We, we've said that on every other one, Norm.
Or we can put it all on the one and say, you buy this, you get a discount, and you, you get it.
I think we already have that existing in some places.
We do have that existing.
Definitely has happened, yeah.
I got a, I got a couple of my own that I dealt with, and that one person has a bond on their end, and that's their issue.
You got Michael's right?
Yeah, and Aline.
I think we've done, I think we've done HOAs just to try to spread the love, so I'll, um.
It seems a lot, lot more fair.
Yeah, that's what I think too.
Yes, no?
Give it all back to the town.
That's right, I agree with Dickie on that one, a hundred percent.
Yeah.
You want the drain? Well, we're, we're putting the concrete in this, so the town will take care of it.
I think the town's gonna have to take care of it anyway.
I do too. Honestly, I don't think there's gonna be much happening there, cause I know the two, not to. The two projects I built, I don't think anyone's ever walked into those ponds since I built them. Including the four storm sectors that are in Valley Drive, I don't think they know where they are.
There's a couple of street trees in that, that pond.
I don't think it hurts to have the HOA, that's.
That kinda, yeah.
So I'll tell him that he's gotta do four, just that detention pond, and for mowing and maintenance, or whatever they do, that someday someone's gonna.
Number seven.
Number seven, here we, here we go, with the flared ends.
Yeah, we're gonna make that concrete, that's simple. Concrete.
Should we push back one more time?
Can we make it out of brick? Can we make it out of brick?
Yeah, how about brick?
Brick, Jesus Christ.
How we just don't do nothing, just let the pipe go.
Alright.
That's it, so, um, the only change is I'll make that on this, on the detail that is concrete, and.
I think we, can we approve this next meeting?
I kinda think so.
Or you can condition it, close the hearing and say, make sure it's concrete, and we're on our way, I even got the mile out right here.
I would rather wait the next meeting, all eyes, all tees crossed, that's me.
We can do that.
I don't know what the, it's just.
So that's the first one in July. And I'll get everybody a set of plans, they have all.
What's eight, is that the sixth?
Eleven, eight, eleven. July eleventh.
So the.
I can handle that.
Change, it's gonna be like concrete.
Concrete flare.
And cast iron streetlights, right?
No, unless you bring in the gas from, from the city.
Whale oil.
Hey. Have every source have gas in this town, trust me.
This means my bonus would be loaded up.
Might be nice.
Yeah, not gonna happen now, not in my lifetime.
So you say this is, uh, gonna be extended?
Yeah.
To July eleventh?
So moved. Oh. So moved, to move to six thirty and July.
July eleventh.
Motion to.
I thought, yeah.
For second.
Well, that was fun. Thank you. What do we do for C and D?
Which one? Therefore, I want on the next page before you get to C and D.
We gotta get to the chapter.
Chapter land, I feel that, oh, I mean.
We got it.
Charge. Thank you so much again, thank you so much again for all you do, for making the.
Entities, if they should be passed on to them.
So, this one, you, the, it's probably leaving it back to what it was, and not bring it up.
We're just, to, what, July eleventh?
I don't, I don't get mad at us.
Well, remember to leave, and that's why.
We had it.
Probably get four done, forty seconds, so.
Right.
Go for it.
And we raise it up to.
And, uh, you raise it up.
Okay.
July eleventh on the form?
That's fine.
What's that?
I put July eleventh on the form, just on the off chance that.
Beautiful.
That it could be heard until that ninety days expires.
Yeah.
Up to him.
What? I think I missed something here.
Okay.
He's, he's talking.
You're talking about the special permits on the estate lots on Ridge Road.
Oh, yeah.
Right, and I, and I'm saying, before I recuse myself, I would like to just say, can we say something about the chapter land, number four?
Yeah.
And then, and then, you guys can talk about whatever you want.
Yeah.
I'm.
Just, just give me three minutes after we get done with four.
Four, two and a half. Well, I, I agree with you on that too.
So what are you looking at on the chapter land?
It's always something, in my opinion, it's, I'd rather see it left open. It does a butt, um, Bonnie Bessie and Carol's property. And Lon, uh, Cool Sandy Beach and all that, it's a hell of a wetland. The title of the wetland does go onto this property. So, um, but I feel that if the town is not interested, or we are not, I would like to also pass it on to DCR and. Or any other entities or, um, land trust that might be interested. Now, I, from what I gather, I think Amy might have, uh, somebody contacted the city of Worcester, and they were not interested in it.
Oh, I don't know anything about that.
Yeah.
So if we sent a letter saying that the planning board.
You did when you would.
Isn't interested, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Note in there that, uh, the planning board recommends checking with other non-Rutland entities?
Yes, because the, the town can pass it on to.
Correct.
Another entity.
I guess that'd be a, to me, that's a planning board recommendation to check with other entities for potential use of that land.
Yeah.
I, fifty-three acres is tough for me to pass up when I look at. And especially, again, my opinion. Main Street, they wanted six hundred thousand dollars for nineteen acres, and fifty-three acres, they went six hundred thousand. Um, and this property has two accesses from Welch and from Emerald, I think, if I'm not mistaken. Um, I get it, that there's wetlands, they're gonna put, they wanna put seven houses there, I'm fine with that, we're gonna have the master do that, I'm sure.
No, I don't know. I watch it though. I did, I worked on that when Kenny was alive.
Okay.
Back in the day, and he had.
That was some time ago.
That was a long time ago, and I had a whole sketch, he says, someday, this will be in the file. But unfortunately, the name on the plan isn't New England Environmental Design, and the kid's called the wrong place. So, it is what it is, and I'm sure he didn't tell them that, oh, by the way, Julian does this, I'm positive he didn't say that, so if you're listening right now. You got me on that one.
My question is, without our, do we ask Tamiki to help us out, or who do we?
Yeah, I wrote the memo for the Concom, I'll write the same memo for the select board and send it to myself for the select board. Just write it to myself, and send it to myself.
Um.
Okay.
Uh, good, that's fours off, so my next thing before Dick goes is, it's not anticipated within the forty-eight hours of this meeting. So, I'm gonna ask, could you give us a synopsis of our, um, of our potential planner and how that. I know we got one more, but.
Yeah.
We don't meet for two weeks, so, I'm curious how this one went.
And.
I don't really name, rank, or serial number more of how it fits in with us.
And I don't, I don't, I don't know if any of this is confidential, I don't see why it necessarily needs to be, cause it was strictly my opinion, split it out.
Your opinion is what we want.
Uh, you know, first of all, there's no doubt about what the guy is qualified.
So he does know about sixty-one and sixty-one As and Bs. Oh, wait a minute, was he ever asked?
That?
Nobody knows about that stuff.
Oh, God, it's not really important.
That's a phenomenon, nobody knows what that stuff means.
What I mean, the, the interview, we went for like two hours. Yeah, on the interview.
That's good.
Which he's, uh, I guess, one of my comments to Austin was, he's something of a storyteller.
It's worse to me.
Which is, you know, which is okay.
Austin was the storyteller?
No, the other.
No. But, uh, he's. He wasn't bragging about himself, he was pretty, just plain, you know, down, down to earth, he did, you know, list various accomplishments and all of this kinda stuff. And he has a wide variety of experience, all the way from, uh, I think, uh, he's worked in Natick, he's worked in West Springfield, he's worked in Ware. Uh, some of, someone, one of the other small, small towns. Uh, so, uh, Douglas, he's also, I mean, I probably, presently, he's working in Douglas. So, um, my, my.
Never mind.
I think you're right.
I know who it is, just tell me who it is.
Let's just say that I think Douglas is the one that just. Just said that the, uh, the town has no money. I think I just heard what, like Rutland was, you know, everybody has to leave. No DPW and all that stuff.
Anyway, my, kinda, kinda my final comment to Austin was that, you know, if he was the only candidate, I'd say, yeah. You know, good enough for that, and again, uh, I, I don't, I don't. Pride myself on being a great judge of character, I'm sorry, you know. I've gotta get to know someone a whole lot better than, you know, just an interview, but he, but he seemed, he seemed pretty much down to earth. Seemed that nobody was talking about on a wide variety of things.
Do you have any kind of a degree or something like that, an engineer?
Actually, he has, this is, yeah, this is, he has a degree in civil engineering tech. Which I had asked Tim about, which he didn't think too much of, the one thing that I will say is.
See on that one. All of us can have PE behind that name.
I don't either.
He did not emphasize his engineering experience. So, I, I think that's.
So good, he's still in business.
Yeah.
Thank God. That was a close one.
You know, I, I don't know, I think Austin was pretty well impressed with it.
Let me ask a question, which was mine, did, did Austin ask the question, which is my always, my tough one, so why are you leaving your other job?
I don't think he did, no, damn it.
That's always the.
Then you're out. That's, that's one that I always ask.
It's either a good response, or it's like red flag.
Yeah, right. No, we did ask him why he wanted to come to Rutland.
Always just.
To shape and mold it correctly.
That's a good answer.
I thought it was because of Jordan Farm, you wanna learn how to milk a cow, eh?
And ride a horse.
And ride a horse.
Ride a horse. I just wanted to get a feel.
You got, there's one more interview on Thursday, correct?
Tomorrow, okay.
So.
Okay.
So I'd like to have a special meeting of the planning board on Thursday, so.
I'm sorry, I already have two meetings that night.
Okay, let's do Friday at five.
Which what Austin apparently is gonna do is, we're gonna have this. Interview tomorrow, and then.
Wish more I can handle.
Sides on. More of an informal interview with just the two of them, on, on the absolute finalist.
His intention is to bring it to the select board July tenth, for.
Wow, I just wish that we had a little bit more.
That's what I'm thinking, Dick.
Yeah, as, being supposed to be a town planner, I would really like to know, uh, how good is he in subdivisions and rules and regulations and because I still.
Technical portion.
From, from, from his resume.
My resume? Well.
A lot of land left.
I, I, I want, not only Keith, but any new person coming in. To be able to, you know, go through the subdivision rule and reg, like, how, how many waivers do we keep putting out year after year?
Yeah.
We should be changing this stuff.
November, December, January, thank you very much.
I counted four.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, sounds good, I'll, I'll, uh, show myself out and have a good evening, everybody.
Well, let's, 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 this way we have.
And I'm. Nothing, nothing, nothing.
We're twice London, Brooklyn Estates, we are going, we have nothing on any of it.
I, I need the board to make a motion to postpone those two special permit hearings.
So moved.
Are you continuing?
I'm, I'm continuing as a board member.
Oh, yes, he is. I volunteered.
I have a full year, roughly.
Thank you, guys.
We'll see you in two weeks. Hi. Now we gotta do the, uh, I motion to adjourn. So moved.
So moved.
Okay.
Okay, guys, thank you.